Thank you so much. So, we're gonna go ahead and kick off the night with our pledge of allegiance. We have two students joining us from Union Elementary. I have, come on here. This is my favorite part. Alright, so tonight, we have Addie and Andrew Pump. Y'all are in the first grade and third grade, right? So, Ms. Addie, you are in Ms. Walker's class. And then Mr. Andrew, you are in Ms. Booker's class, correct? Alright, so, what is your absolute favorite thing at school? What do you love to do whenever you go to school?
Math.
What do you like, Andrew?
Our science and math.
I like that so much. So, here is what some folks from their school had to say. So, whenever we asked about Ms. Addie, we were told that she is super kind, and she is a cooperative student, that she's friendly to everyone in the school, and that she's responsible, respectful, and she is caring to her teachers and to her friends. That Addie is always ready to help, and that she usually helps without even being asked. Is that right? I love that. So, Mr. Andrew, he is a patriot. So, he loves America, and he loves his school. He's a loyal friend, and... Do you love Taylor Swift? That's what I heard. Is that right? Do you love Taylor Swift, Mr. Andrew?
It depends.
It depends. Okay, that's fair. So, I was told also that your dad is deployed, and he serves in the military. We are so proud of that, and we just appreciate that so much. And we just appreciate y'all being here to do the pledge with us tonight. Are you ready? Alright, do you wanna jump up there on the stage and kick us off? Alright, if you'll stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Alright, so, up next, we have our mission statement. And this month, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Erin Long to kick us off with our mission statement.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches. Welcome. Bienvenidos. Hay muchos gente aqui. There are a lot of folks here, and we are so happy to have you all. If you will please, look to the wall and join me in reading the mission statement. De ir conmigo.
Lincoln County Schools will work together with students, families, and the community to ensure quality, innovative educational program in a safe environment where students become responsible, contributing citizens, and lifelong warriors.
Thank you.
So, if y'all didn't know it, Ms. Long is one of our newest board members, and she is incredibly fluent in Spanish, which I find amazing and fascinating. And (laugh) she's very fluent. And so, I find that she is a really big asset to the board, and we appreciate your service. So, up next, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
To approve?
To have a motion by Ms. Brandy Wyatt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Long. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. I will turn it over to Dr. Allen for our superintendent updates and informational items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Community, those guests in our, in our audience today, and board members. We're wrapping up our winter sports season right now, and playoffs are beginning to get in full swing coming up in a few short days. Middle school sports, spring tryouts are coming up next week due to some rain issues this week. Some of them have been pushed to next week. But high school, their competitions for athletics are just two weeks away. So, spring sports season is almost here. I wanna congratulate and thank, we have 25 awesome teacher leaders that showed up for our third installment of our Teacher Leadership Academy, where we are trying to grow teacher leaders in our school building. And we had that last week, and had a great, a great opportunity to fellowship and learn with those folks. We also had a productive, what we call, Iron Sharpen's Iron event, which is a lot of our staff go and see each other teach, and other, and give feedback, and get feedback, and grow and learn professionally. And I appreciate all the people that were part of the contribution to make that, that productive. But that is just a testament to our teachers longing to get better at what they do, and doing that in-house without having to go, go far, far away. I'm also pretty excited that last couple weeks to about a month, I've heard a lot of great feedback about our school system. Some of the county line news that has made its way in throughout the social media and on the newspapers. One thing that has kept coming up over and over again, especially at our community forums, is that how appreciative and supportive people that are impacted by this line change really are of our school system. And it's not to disparage any other place, but just to understand that they really appreciate what we offer here. And I, and I appreciate them speaking up and being vocal about that. I'm also excited to announce that we were, we were part of a group with Atrium Health in Lincoln, Gaston College in Lincoln, and Lincoln County Schools, along with our Commissioner's blessing, applied for a Golden Leaf Grant. That is a big, big statewide grant that we are glad to say that Golden Leaf awarded a grant to Gaston College to invest in our Lincoln, Lincoln County Schools Health Academy at Gaston College in Lincoln with a partnership with Atrium Health. And so, over a million dollars has been granted to Gaston College to, to outfit their space, to make sure our students have Health Academy opportunities for the future beyond their experience at School of Tech, and in conjunction with School of Tech. So, I'm pretty, pretty pumped about that, and looking forward to the fruits of that labor paying off. And then last but not least, unfortunately, we did lose one of our staff members to, to a tragic event. And so, I'd like to end this superintendent update with another moment of silence. But if you would, please remember the family of Beth Pinkney, an employee of ours from North Lincoln High School. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Okay, so, we will begin our special presentations tonight with our senior spotlight. So, I'm gonna ask Angel Durant from West Lincoln High School to join me up here. You can just talk into the microphone. So, I'll go ahead and let y'all know that we started doing this last year. Every month towards the end of the year, we highlight one of our high schools every month. And the goal is to showcase what it looks like to be a senior with Lincoln County Schools. And we send them out some questions, and we want our students to be able to tell the story of Lincoln County Schools when they leave us. And so, I am so excited that Angel is here with me tonight. So, I'm gonna ask him the same questions that I said to him earlier. And you can talk to the board, or you can talk to the audience, okay? And I'm sure your people, your, your, everybody would like a picture of you as well while you're talking. So, what extracurricular activities are you involved in?
So, I...
Step up and jump in there.
So, I coach a U soccer team.
There we go.
I coach a U soccer team for the Recreation Center parks.
Okay.
And, yeah, then, I do Gaston classes sometimes too.
Okay, fantastic. So, I'm gonna hand you the microphone. I want everybody here, yeah?
Okay.
Okay, so, tell me about your favorite memory or your favorite experience that you've had with Lincoln County Schools.
So, my favorite experience was defeating a school rival, Bunker Hill.
Okay.
On our senior night, I mean, I, yeah, it wasn't senior night, no, no. It was Eastburg, I'm sorry. Yeah, we always lost against them, but it changed this year.
That's fantastic. Was everybody super excited?
Oh, yes, we were.
And everybody went nuts, I'm sure. So, who or what was most helpful or most influential in your high school career?
My principal, she was, uh, she's always there for us, so, like, if we ever have a problem or an issue, like, even if we have an issue for a student, if he wakes up late, she's already on the phone, already calling them.
Ms. Eli, is that true?
Yes.
I love that. Did she ever have to call you?
No.
Okay.
I wake up on time.
You do? Well, maybe you can teach my son. So, so, tell me about some challenges that maybe you ran into and how you overcame them.
So, with, whenever COVID started, my grades fell all the way down because I didn't know what to do. Like, I wasn't used to the online stuff. And then, I just got used to working with teachers on, during the online part and stuff.
That's fantastic. So, I think y'all have noticed consistently since 2020 that almost all of our students, when they come up here, everybody has the same answer, that COVID was difficult for them because, you know, you had to figure out online learning and time management, and I think that's probably a good skill that you've learned. So, what are your plans after graduation?
So, I plan on finishing my welding degree for Gaston, and then going to Central Piedmont or CBCC to acquire my automotive.
Oh, I like that.
So, that's interesting, yeah.
That's amazing. Okay, so, is there anything else that you want us to know about Lincoln County Schools?
It's a great, uh, let's go, county. It has a lot of offer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, fantastic. Well, I'm gonna challenge you to do the same thing I've challenged all of our other seniors. In a couple years, I want you to come back, and I want you to tell us what you're doing and how successful you are, because we know that you're gonna do big things. Alright? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Stay with me. Alright, board, if you'll join me around front, we'll go ahead and take a picture. Thank you, Angel. Great job.
Moving in to our recognitions, it's my honor to recognize this year's district spelling bee winner and runner-up. If we would first have our runner-up come up, Ms. Evelyn Dragoon. Evelyn here? Oh, no. Okay, well, I'm sorry, she must not be here this evening. Our winner is Ms. Eva Hedrick. And, yeah, go ahead and give her a hand of applause. Eva competed 24 rounds, and her winning word was solitude. It was a little tense, wasn't it? So, Eva received this trophy with her name on it and a check for $100. And here is your certificate. There you go. Alright, congratulations. If you'll head right over there, and I'll take your photo. The next on our lineup for recognitions is our Lincoln leads. And we're gonna start with Union Elementary Student Leadership Team. And I believe I saw them here on the front row. Come on up, don't be shy, don't be shy. Anyone wanna accept the certificate for your group? If you'll head on over there. Thomas, yep, I thought I saw you. Come on, Ms. Thomas, you're the sponsor. Mrs. Dellinger nominated the student, Union Student Leadership. They're a bunch of fourth and fifth graders, along with Ms. Thomas there, who's gonna, she'll get in my picture when I take it. Ms. Dellinger says, "Our students' leadership at Union is making a difference through their acts of service. They have multiple committees. They have a beautification committee, a community service committee, a fundraising committee, school service, and spirit." And then, students can choose their committee, and then they're able to lead their school in a positive manner. They're even opening up car doors in the mornings, and they're showing a caring heart when they say, "Good afternoon, I look forward to seeing you tomorrow." That's a nice message. And it makes our students feel loved. And then, our teachers and staffs received a heartfelt Christmas pancake breakfast. Did y'all help with that too? You've been very busy. And they were, Ms. Dellinger says, "They were eager and ready to come in early to prepare the breakfast for the staff. This shows a servant heart, and she is very proud of student leadership and the impact they make on a daily basis." Well done. Great job, great job, thank you. Excuse me. Next, we're gonna go to West Lincoln Middle School, Taylor Gorman and Connor Haywood.
Taylor, you're right. Connor? I was half-right, wasn't I? And then, oh, forgot. There you go.
Right over there, and I'll tell you what Mr. Bean said. Mr. Bean said, "These two fine young men take pride every day in raising and lowering the flag at West Lincoln Middle School. When it rains, they go out there and take it down, and they also make sure the light works in the afternoon, even when it's up late. And they have done their research on the do's and don'ts of flag detail. As their principal," this is what Mr. Bean said, "he is proud to call them his students, and even better, a product of the West Zone. These two have success written all over them. Thank you, gentlemen." Thank you, boys. Next, I would like to recognize Ms. Amanda Martin from West Lincoln Middle School. Mrs. Martin is a seventh-grade social studies teacher, and I believe she's been a little busy this semester organizing a Renaissance Fair. Hold on, let me find your certificate here. There you guys, congratulations. Welcome over there, and I'll finish reading about you. Mr. Bean says that Ms. Martin led and organized a Renaissance Fair for the whole seventh grade at West Middle. The event happened during the school day. She partnered with Ms. Warren, the other social studies teacher, to have the students do research projects about the Renaissance time period. And then, on the event day, students visited booths that they created about the time period, just like the big Renaissance festival in Charlotte. They even involved cross-curricular activities among all the seventh-grade teachers, planning roles for each student, and giving tasks to her other colleagues in the grade level. This event was a huge success due to her proper planning. Great job, Ms. Martin. And last, but certainly not least, from West Lincoln High School, our ESL Student Leadership Group. We have Angel and Hemina. Alright, come on up. Here's our certificate for your leadership group. Now, as they're coming up, Angel and Hemina, along with several other student volunteers, they lead a mentor and tutoring group every Thursday for students that speak only Spanish. You may have to invite Ms. Long to come by, she might enjoy that. Although they are off-campus, oh, come on, I'm sorry. We're not being shy. Be lovely. I'm so sorry. Although they are off-campus, learning during Rebel time, they come to school on Thursdays and bring students together at West High, pair them up with another bilingual student, and they check on each other's grades, attendance, and well-being. They have shared Hispanic traditions with the group, as well as Hispanic food, to help all students feel safe and comfortable at our school. Ms. Eli says, "These students have greatly impacted our school in a positive way, not only academically, but also as positive leaders with a goal of inclusion for all students regardless of background." And that's very important. West Lincoln High School is thankful for what they do for us and are proud that they are always, will be, a West Lincoln Rebel. These students will make a wonderful impact on our community in the future. Great job, thank you. Great job.
It is my pleasure to recognize each Lincoln Middle School eighth grader Caitlin Sealsky and North Lincoln High School 10th grader Mallory Matheny for their winning essays in this year's Daughters of the American Revolution Essay Contest. Give them a chance to come up here. And Mallory. Alright. Caitlin was recognized at the Vesuvius Chapter's December Dar Christmas Tea, and then Mallory was recognized just this past weekend at the Jacob Forney Chap- February, Chapter's February meeting. Mallory's essay won for dis- for our district and is now being judged at the state level, so hopefully we'll be able to invite her back for some state recognition. This year's theme was enjoying a new kind of tea party. Everyone is familiar with the Boston Tea Party, but did you know that North Carolina actually participated with two events following the Boston Tea Party? And those were in Edenton and Wilmington. And these young ladies had to write an essay describing what happened at those events, whether they would have participated or not, and whether they supported the outcomes.
Good evening. I don't need a mic, so, that's really sort of surprised me. I'm here, my name is Reverend Wingit, Steve Wingit. I'm here, and the president of the Coalition of Churches is Dennis Poston. And of course, you all know our faithful and former employee, Ms. Olamay Foster, is vice president of the Coalition of Churches. And I'm just the event planner. And so, we wanted to come tonight to present certificates, and as well as monies for the effort with the Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest. Wanna call your names, and if you would come up at this time, shake the hand of the president and vice president, and I'll give you your financial contribution. And they're gonna stand there and take the picture, alright? Wait, come here. You want? No. Hold that. Alright. Oh, yeah. Come on, come back, come back, Adam.
She said we take the picture.
Cory Bell Wilson. They can't. They can't. Do the start, start when you get up to the school board, shake hands, leading from left to right. Get your money. Right here, start right there, that's right. Kaylee Ariana Sierra. They didn't want me to keep the money. Madeline C. Huss. Charlotte Davy. They're a little nervous tonight. And then the last one, Owen Heatley. Okay? Alright, go up here.
Good evening, I'm here to present the Ignite Award recipients. The Ignite Award is an academic recognition program that honors athletic, athletic and performing art program scholastic achievers with Lincoln County Schools. The following high schools are being recognized for the First Semester Award. First of all, I'd like to call up North Lincoln High School's Women's Cross Country Team. We also recognize this team in December as being the 3A State Champions. Not only can they run well, but they are also very smart. Of the four high schools in 12 different sports at each school, North Lincoln Women's Cross Country Team had the highest GPA. They had an overall team GPA of 3.89. So, congratulations to the North Lincoln High School Women's Cross Country Team. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to call up West Lincoln High School's Marching Band for the Performing Arts Programs winner. Oh my gosh, that's pretty good. Okay, so West Lincoln Marching Band, they won this award in the fall last year, and they also won the overall award last year. So the plaque is now housed at West Lincoln High School, I'm assuming, in the marching band room. And Mr. Britton said he's very proud of this award for his marching band students, and he hopes to just keep the plaque there next year, I mean, this year coming up. He also said it was a three-peat unlike the Kansas City Chiefs. So I thought that was pretty good, I thought that was pretty good. But they had an overall GPA of 3.67. So congratulations to the West Lincoln High School Marching Band. You good? Okay, we're good, congratulations.
Alright, board members. We did not have anyone sign up per board protocol to appear before the board, so we will move on. We do have a need for a closed session to discuss privileged information under NCGS 143318.11A1 to discuss matters that are confidential under the North Carolina law, particularly personnel matters under GS 115C319321, and student matters under FERPA, and A3 to discuss matters that are protected by attorney-client privilege. I will entertain that motion.
Make a motion to go into closed session.
We have a motion by Ms. Wyatt, is there a second? Second by Ms. Long, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying ahh. Those opposed, motion is carried. We are now in closed session.
Motion is carried. Also, on our action items is the school calendar for the 2025-2026 school year. I will entertain a motion to approve the calendar as presented. I have a motion by Ms. Long. A second by Mr. Jenkins. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying ahh. Those opposed? Motion has carried. Item 11 is our consent agenda items. We have the approval of minutes from the board work session board meeting on January 14th, 2025. Special call board meeting on January 17th, 2025. Personnel recommendations. Approval of policies required to stand open for 25 days for input as presented on the agenda. Policies which stood open 25 days for input as presented on the agenda. And the extended field trip curricular. I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items as presented. I have a motion by Mr. Jenkins. Is there a second? A second by Ms. Wyatt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying ahh. Those opposed? Motion is carried. To board members, you will see our reminders and announcements. We have an optional workday February 17th. We have our board work session on March 4th and our board meeting on March 11th. I just want to say thank you all for being here tonight and for just your diligence of being a fantastic board. It's always an honor to sit at the dais with you, so thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. I have a motion by Ms. Long. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Jenkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried. We are adjourned.